Mr. Shee? Here. Mr. Arico? Here. Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Peng? Mrs. Peng, she here?
Mrs. Peng, you here?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Uh, Mr. Brescher?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chet?
Here.
All present.
Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Pub Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 11th, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So, the first agenda item, it's the every year, it's very exciting for all of us, the teacher recognition. So, let me introduce Berninda Mahavier. She's gonna kick off for this event.
Mr. Shee, Mr. Saxon, the Board of Education. It's my great pleasure today to celebrate the Teachers of the Year for this 2018-2019 school year. When I ask people who inspired them most, the most often answer is teacher or family member. Consider that for a moment. A parent or a family member generally has several moments over the course of several years to make an impact. A teacher usually only has one. Yet, time and time again, the teacher is the one that is named as the inspiration or mentor. It is amazing the power that our teachers have and the amount of energy, time, and love they convey to their students. We're here to celebrate some of those mentors today, and it is my great pleasure to introduce a video of our honorees for the 2018-2019 Teachers of the Year.
They had called saying that a parent wanted to talk to me on the phone, and like instantaneously my like stomach dropped, and I was like, "Oh, there's a parent that wants to talk." So, they got me coverage, and I went down, and Dr. Rojas got on the loudspeaker and like just started talking, and then all of a sudden it clicked that it was for Teacher of the Year.
Wow, I was really surprised. I was very flattered. It was a very humbling experience to be chosen by my peers, and I was also a little bit relieved because I came in and there wasn't a vote in my box for my principal, "Come see me," and just, you know, that little panic, "What did I do wrong?"
Someone even, you know, giving me a chance to be nominated, taking the time to write a letter, a parent or colleague, that in itself was special.
When I heard my name announced over the loudspeaker, I was taken aback. I was just blown away.
So, I was surprised, and I cried, of course. I actually nominated a colleague, so I wasn't expecting it, and I was very appreciative to be noticed for the things I do.
It's actually in the office when Mrs. Valentine said it over the loudspeaker, so I was listening to her, and I was kinda like, "Oh, that sounds like me," and then I turned around and she said my name.
I literally couldn't believe it. When they said my name, my jaw probably hit the floor. There was actually another teacher in the room with me, and I turned to her and I was like, "Did they just say my name?"
Um, it was really exciting. I've been doing this for a little while now, so just to have someone take the time to write a letter in, it's for me to be even considered was very nice.
I felt it was quite an honor to be named Teacher of the Year. I feel like there's a lot of great teachers here at J.P. Stevens, and to be put in that category with those teachers is quite an accomplishment.
It felt very rewarding to be named Teacher of the Year. I was very proud. I was honored to receive such an amazing recognition.
I grew up in Edison, so I went to school here, and I watched all of the teachers, you know, really motivate me, inspire me, also take care of my brother who had a learning disability.
I think teaching is something I've always wanted to do. I used to love the days that my mom would take me with her, and I got to see what she did and what her friends did, and my aunt taught in the same school.
So, I'm the ESL teacher, which means I teach children that English is not their first language, and both my parents were immigrants from Italy, and they came here and were immersed in the schools. It was like sink or swim. There was nothing for them, and talking to them was really a struggle. And I have two languages. I speak Italian and English, and so I thought that was a good fit.
In high school, in junior year, I had a fabulous U.S. AP History teacher. We do all projects and simulations and role plays, and it was fascinating, and I thought, "This is what I want to do."
When I was in high school, I was given an opportunity as a senior to do service hours with the elementary school we were affiliated with. So, I was able to go in every day for two hours a day and work with kids in different grade levels, and I just loved it, just seeing how they would grow from day to day. It was just a really great feeling, and I was like, "Hey, I wanna do this forever."
My aunt, Jan Vanzilio Cangelosi, she's been my mentor my entire life. She helped me through college, deciding on a major, persuaded me to interview in Edison. I was a little apprehensive at first because I went to John Marshall, Thomas Jefferson as a child, I went to Edison High School, so I kind of wanted to like go off on my own, but, you know, it was the right decision. This is my home, so she's really responsible for me becoming a teacher in Edison.
I went to Martin Luther King. I went to John Adams, and I had some teachers that I work with now, and then I went to J.P. Stevens, who again, I had teachers who inspired me. I wanted to be like them. I wanted to make a difference in kids' lives, and I just wanted to make learning fun. So, they have always been my inspiration.
In my senior year of high school, I was actually able to take this program called Senior Option, where I was able to leave school every day and go to work at one of the elementary schools in town. So, I was in a fourth grade class, and in that program is really where I found my niche in life.
I have a profound to severe hearing loss, and my mom just always made sure that I was like advocating for myself and picking up for myself, and made sure that, you know, I got the best education that I possibly could receive. I realized that I wanted to be able to do that for children as well. Like, I want kids to realize that no matter what the disability is or, you know, abilities are, that they can, you know, become the best versions of themselves.
Well, I went through the Edison School System, and I had so many great teachers. I had Bob Stasco, I had Janet Lamontico that was here, and a bunch of other great teachers. And that was one thing, but really, when I was going to college, I started substitute teaching, and at that point, I wasn't sure exactly what I wanted to do, and I substituted for a math class, and I was helping some of the students out, and they said, "You explain this in a way that I understand it a lot better." So, I, you know, it made me feel good that I was able to help the students understand it better, and I, at that point, I felt like I wanted to become a teacher.
What inspired me to be a teacher was my younger brother. My brother has Down Syndrome, and at a very young age, I learned that he would need a lot of extra help. So, I just naturally took on a very motherly, very overprotective role. It's because of him that I was inspired to be a teacher.
It makes me so proud to be a small piece to the student's puzzle of life, when they grow up and achieve their goals, no matter how big or how small. Every teacher that has had an influence on their education is there with them during that very important moment.
It's all of the success stories and all of the kids that come back and say, "I'm 26-years-old," and I'm like, "Oh, God, and this is what I'm doing with my life, and it's because of you." And they send me these amazing things. I have a wall behind my desk, and I just, every year, I redo the wall, and it gets filled with people that come back this, that, next year, just saying, "You made a difference." Like, "You changed the way I feel about just life. Forget about English, reading, writing. Like, you changed my mentality."
Some of the teens I have were he was four-year-olds. So, the cycle, you know, they're coming back. I've had former teens whose children are in the program now, other teens that tell me, "I remember doing this when I was here. You know, I remember this, I remember that." That's so rewarding, you know, that you had a positive impression on them. I think that's, you know, as they say, there's so many memories, I couldn't just single one out. Yeah.
I had a student, taught a student many years ago, who was very secretive in his way that he thought. He didn't like to share a lot, and, but he would do things that he wanted you to try to figure out, like, kind of like a secret code. So, my favorite memory is that once I was able to break his code with different colors and symbols, then he opened up and really learned and flourished.
I'm always getting that wow factor with my kids, whether it's working with watercolors, and they see how salt changes the effects of the color, or they're mixing paints, they're using their clay, and they see the effects of a print for the first time. I always get that excitement in my room, and it's, they love it, so I'm very fortunate.
So, I have a couple kids that actually came to me when they were three-years-old with no language, and I was able to get them again in third grade when I came over here, and I even have had them again in fifth grade. So, I think that that whole experience has been pretty awesome for me, just to see them from when they were itty-bitty to now these fifth graders going into sixth grade, and how far they've come and how amazing they are is pretty awesome.
One of my favorite memories is always the aha moment, when students are struggling and struggling, and they finally, finally the light bulb goes off, and they get it, and they have such a feeling of accomplishment and excitement, and that makes me happy as a teacher, and then when students reach out, when they're in high school, when they're in college, and they let us know what they're doing, and I love seeing that and seeing their faces later on.
The thing that strikes me the most when I watch that is the absolute joy that those of you up there exude as you're talking about your teachers. I cannot ask for anything more, and I am truly privileged to work with actually everybody in this room, so I thank you for that. Up first to kick up our honors is Mr. Scully, Principal of Lincoln Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Saxon and the Board of Ed, for giving us this opportunity to showcase Edison's finest. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sean Scully. I'm the Principal of Lincoln Elementary School. I am proud to present Mrs. Lamafa as our 2018-2019 Teacher of the Year. As a fifth-grade special ed teacher, she finds creative ways to bring lessons to life, inspires children to facilitate their own learning, helps students reach their full potential. She creates lessons at each one's starting points and supports them along the learning continuum. She helps students love to learn. Her joy for teaching is not limited to our classroom. Mrs. Lamafa promotes a safe and positive school environment by co-leading our safety patrol. She also is our Camp Bernie Coordinator. She empowers students to be leaders and role models in our school. Mrs. Lamafa is often collaborating with her co-teacher, Mrs. Durkin, and planning all the fifth-grade activities, such as our move-up ceremony, field trips, picnics, and more. Thank you, Mrs. Lamafa, for making fifth grade a memorable school year for our students. Thank you. Mrs. Lamafa is also a proud mom of two boys, and is always running home to make sure they get to their different activities, especially Boy Scouts, theater, track, baseball. Mrs. Lamafa loves to eat Italian food and always wants that fountain soda. Okay, I got that one for somebody. And she is a proud new owner of a shih-tzu named Abby. Okay, okay. Mrs. Lamafa, thank you for representing Lincoln as our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. I would now like to introduce the Principal of Washington Elementary School, Mrs. Schlatter.
I would also like to present Ms. Carrie Lopez, the Vice Principal at Washington Elementary. I am proud this evening to recognize Ms. Kristin Schafter as Washington School's Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Schafter has worked at Washington School since 2005 as a Special Education teacher. Her understanding and implementation of a multi-sensory approach to teaching ensures that she is meeting the needs of her very diverse group of students. She connects the concepts being taught in the classroom to the real world to support their learning. Beyond her classroom, Mrs. Schafter plays a valuable role at Washington Elementary School. She's a Safety Patrol Advisor, Girls on the Run Coach, and a member of many committees. As a member of our Intervention and Referral Service Committee, she supports teachers in establishing goals for their students and offers instructional strategies on how to meet those goals. She shares her wealth of knowledge with her colleagues and luckily with me. She shares, oh, I'm sorry, she is a true asset to the Washington School community, and I cannot be more proud to have Mrs. Schafter as our Teacher of the Year. I would like to now call up Ms. Donna Bettamarko, Principal at James Madison Intermediate.
I am Donna Bettamarko, and as a proud Principal of James Madison Intermediate School, it's my honor to present Mrs. Diane Moscow as our 2018-2019 Teacher of the Year. Throughout her career, Mrs. Moscow has been a paraprofessional and has taught in the capacity of a Special Education teacher in preschool, third grade, and fifth grade. Mrs. Moscow will do anything and everything in order to help her students succeed in achieving their goals they once thought were impossible. Since her teacher brain never shuts off, Mrs. Moscow is always working before school, after school, during prep, during lunch, and on the weekends, crafting the perfect lessons and finding ways to make learning come to life for her students. She gets to know her learners as individuals and is their biggest cheerleader in the classroom as they take on new challenges. Mrs. Moscow cultivates a learning environment where students know they are loved, respected, and valued. Anyone who is fortunate enough to spend time in Mrs. Moscow's presence can see and feel the genuine care she has for all her students. Beyond being a stellar teacher, Mrs. Moscow is the creator of the annual JMI's Got Talent Event. This show, which has tripled in size over the past three years, provides students with a platform to showcase their many talents. She also serves as the co-advisor to the Extreme Makeover Club, where students work collaboratively to revamp the courtyard so the whole school can enjoy it throughout the year. Mrs. Moscow's positive impact extends well beyond JMI. In addition to creating a slideshow that is used throughout the district to educate students about autism, Mrs. Moscow has organized numerous fundraisers that helped FDR and James Madison Primary School purchase sensory equipment for their classrooms. Mrs. Moscow is an MVP to her students and colleagues, and JMI is lucky to call her one of their own. Congratulations, Mrs. Moscow, of being JMI's Teacher of the Year. I would now like to introduce the Principal of Benjamin Franklin School, Mr. Steve Prevell.
I would also like to introduce our Assistant Principal, Ms. Fenton, who's here this evening with us. Good evening, and congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. Relationships, trust, caring, passion, and respect are just a few words that come to mind when reflecting on why Mrs. Baps has been selected as Ben Franklin School's Teacher of the Year. Over the last 21 years, Mrs. Baps has been positively affecting the lives of students in and outside of the classroom. She brings a love and excitement of learning and motivates her students in a variety of ways. She values every student in her class as if they were her own. Every student is made to feel valued and successful regardless of their ability. Denise is in constant contact with the students, parents, and staff. She is in the district Pride Event Coordinator for Edison Township. This leadership role has her involved in the entire district. She coordinates the ETEA Volleyball Tournament Event and the District Reading Contest. Denise has a fun, caring demeanor and is constantly finding ways to bring the Ben Franklin community together. Her character traits of being warm and fuzzy are felt among her peers. I often see colleagues chatting with her for some advice for teaching strategies and community events. She is known for her organized themed days for the students to dress up or express themselves, thus creating a fun, loving, learning environment. Mrs. Baps is involved in a multitude of activities out of the classroom as well. She heads and organizes the School Drama Club, which students perform in a major production with costumes, music, and sets. Her true compassion and sense of inclusiveness is evident as no child is ever turned away as she believes that all children should have the experience of being a shining star. She, along with her grade-level colleagues, organizes and executes a Thanksgiving feast and a production celebrating diversity and the contributions of none other than Dr. Martin Luther King. I really cannot think of a more loving, genuine, kind-hearted teacher to receive this honor. Mrs. Baps possesses all the qualities that a great teacher should have: compassion, dedication, student advocacy, and genuine care and concern for all that in her room. I am honored to call this wonderful teacher a colleague, and more importantly, a friend as well. She is truly an inspiration to many, and for these reasons, it is easy to see why, and many others, why Mrs. Baps has been selected to be the 2018-19 Benjamin Franklin School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. And she too will have this plaque living in for me at the Ben Franklin Awards. It is now my honor to call up none other than the one and only Mrs. Hoffman from John Marshall School.
I would also like to introduce our Vice Principal, Joanne Delina. Good evening. My name is Amy Hoffman, and I am the proud Principal of John Marshall Elementary School. I am honored tonight to recognize our school's Teacher of the Year, Jen Rossiter. One of the reasons Mrs. Rossiter is awesome is because she has an infectious smile. She arrives in the morning full of zest and enthusiasm, and it is felt in everyone she sees. She comes in wearing to go, and this is after getting her own four children ready for school. Jen Rossiter is the type of teacher that goes above and beyond the job description, not for the recognition, but for her students. She had a student who got hurt and broke a bone, and without anyone in the school knowing, she went to visit the student and brought a smile and a toy as she knew it would brighten their day. Ten years ago, the district decided to move the ESL program to John Marshall. Miss Rossiter went kicking and screaming. Little did she know, she would have the opportunity to work with a great principal like myself and become our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Miss Rossiter. I would now like to call up Michael Duggan, Principal of Menlo Park Elementary School.
Congratulations to all of recipients tonight. They're certainly most deserving. When Tina talks about her students, even the ones who provide those unique challenges, her eyes smile. She gets kids, she enjoys them, and she enjoys her role as their teacher. Her positivity and enthusiasm is contagious. When you enter her room, the students are hooked, they're engaged, they're excited. She challenges them to think creatively, and she keeps our little first graders also to learn to care about each other. In addition to being an amazing teacher, Tina assists with testing, is our technology coordinator, is on the INRS Committee, she's on the Food Service Committee, she teaches in the academy, she attends Camp Bernie, other school functions, and now she's heading up our Wingman Initiative. I don't do very much because Tina's in my school. Whether as a student, a parent, a colleague, or an administrator, Tina is always willing to go the extra distance to help. Everybody at Menlo cares deeply about Tina. You probably don't know that Tina is a big Mets fan, and even though she's a Mets fan, people still like her. That shows you how amazing she is. Thank you for all you do for our students and our school. Congratulations, Tina, on being Menlo's Teacher of the Year. You are most deserving. Now, we'd like to have Cindy Tofaro, Principal of James Monroe.
I'm also joined by Mrs. Krista Fenton, our Assistant Principal.
Hi again.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Tofaro, Principal of James Monroe Elementary School, and I am honored and proud to introduce Mrs. Claudine Said, James Monroe's Teacher of the Year. Claudine Said has served for 12 years as an in-class resource teacher at James Monroe School. Her greatest contribution is always pushing every Special Education student she has ever taught to work to their fullest potential. She is determined to empower them to feel like they can succeed and meet their goals. Growing up with a brother with special needs, Claudine possesses the qualities to be an outstanding Special Education teacher. She understands and connects with students who struggle in a different kind of way. She has a high level of patience and can empathize with students, which made Special Education her calling. She is intuitive and senses any underlying issues behind a child's behavior that they can't express, and approaches every situation with care and understanding. Claudine is the child whisperer. The idea of supporting students' social and emotional development has always been very important to Claudine. She believes it is necessary to build a classroom where every student feels respected and is an important part of a community. Her commitment to this philosophy is reflected in the way she helps students develop through her leadership in school clubs, committees, and professional development. Recently, she jumped at the chance to attend a four-day training on responsive classroom training, which helped her expand on her knowledge and of social and emotional techniques in the classroom. She has been sharing the success of the classroom and promoting it to other teachers in the school by opening her classroom doors to others, presenting at a faculty meeting, and sharing her materials as well as her experiences. In fact, her students helped to announce her as the Teacher of the Year during a morning meeting. Claudine is a collaborative member of the staff who serves on committees such as Health and Safety, Human Relations, Literacy, Beautification Committee at James Monroe. Additionally, she facilitates the Rainbow's Program to support students who are grieving a loss. The Mindful Owls Club was piloted by Claudine this year as well, and further supports social emotional development. Claudine also played an integral role in the implementation of the Wingman Program at James Monroe and serves as one of our Wingman Champions, and Claudine is sharing her expertise with other staff and families as a member of the INRS team. An interesting fact about Claudine is she arrived here at the age of seven from Egypt and was enrolled in the ELL Program in Edison Township Schools. She has always had a fascination with different cultures and loves sharing her background with her students. This allows her to form connections with many of them, and she believes it encourages the children to show pride in their own culture, instills acceptance and tolerance of our differences. Claudine's most important teaching role is mom to her two children, daughter Alina and her son Alex. Hi, Alex. Claudine wasn't the only one recognized for her outstanding achievement this month. Both mother and daughter were recently honored at Patriots baseball games. Alina for Most Improved Student, and Claudine for Teacher of the Year. Double the reason for the Said family to be proud. Congratulations to the most deserving teacher, Mrs. Claudine Said.
I'd like to call up Dr. Rojas from Lindonelle Elementary School. He's the principal there.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Rojas, proud Principal of Lyndon Now Elementary School, and it is a complete honor to recognize Ms. Mary Claire Pagels as our 2019 Teacher of the Year. Now, Ms. Pagels is a unique and kind soul, one that you can't, you barely see. She, I am convinced that she can't go a day without smiling. If I have pictures and I post it up here, I can, and she doesn't know this, I actually have candid paper maybe, but if you see her sharpening a pencil, she's smiling. You see her eating a bagel, she's smiling. You see her walking, walking hallways, smiling. Talking to children, smiling. So this is something that is special about her. This is something that I hope that you never lose, and I'm pretty sure she's smiling right now. And I hope, again, something that you never, ever, ever lose. Ms. Pagels inspires her children every day. She is not shy about sharing her unique experiences as a child and sharing those with her children so that they equally are inspired and motivated. This year, Ms. Pagels has an interesting student in her class, a student who needs an additional push. Now, every morning, you see Ms. Pagels, for some reason, she found out that this child loves music, is a talented keyboard player. So every morning, you see Ms. Pagels walking down the hallway, and she's carrying this humongous keyboard that is twice her size. It's probably, I mean, I don't know how she does it every morning, but she brings it to the main office, and this child, in the morning, during morning announcement, comes and does a jingle for the entire school to as a morning announcement to the building. Ms. Pagels, I hope that you continue to inspire students and continue to do as you do with this child because you literally are the highlight of this child's day every single morning. I often tell the teachers, be the teacher that you want for your children. Inspire them as you want a teacher to inspire your children. And this is who Ms. Pagels is. I am completely honored to have Ms. Pagels in our staff, and I hope you complete success in your career. And now I'd like to call Ms. Nicole Cerillo, Principal of Woodbrook Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nicole Cerillo, proud Principal of Woodbrook Elementary School. Mrs. Chicarella is the type of teacher who brings out the best in each and every one of her children. She brings her background knowledge as a former special education teacher to her class, to her in-class resource classroom, and works diligently with her co-teacher each and every day to bring out the best academic, social, and emotional traits in each of her students. Her first-grade students learn to become independent, respectful, and responsive to one another in a room where communication and conversation are of the utmost importance. Not only does Mrs. Chicarella help her students to learn and grow, but she ensures that she continues on her own learning journey by attending workshops and book clubs, researching best practices on her own, and she's presently working to present a PDI, a Professional Development Institute, this summer to her peers across the district. Mrs. Chicarella has brought a good deal of sunshine to Woodbrook through her active collaboration for school-wide activities for both staff and students. Mrs. Chicarella runs exciting STEM clubs for students, and she also began a kindness club, helping our students spread kindness within and beyond our school community. Mrs. Chicarella truly believes that relationships with children, families, and staff are the foundation of living and learning. It is my honor to recognize Mrs. Linda Chicarella and her children, Emma and Cara, as Woodbrook's Teacher of the Year. The cheerleading section. And now, may I introduce Mrs. Regina Arnold from Martin Luther King Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm joined also with our Assistant Principal, Ms. Carrie Lopez. It is great pleasure to introduce you to MLK's Teacher of the Year, Melissa Northrup. Ms. Northrup is commended for her dedication to building relationships with each of her students to ensure that all academic and emotional needs are met. From the moment you walk into her first-grade classroom, it is evident that it's a nurturing learning environment where everyone can succeed. From fixing Chromebooks as our tech coordinator to giving hugs as students walk through her door, Ms. Northrup's can-do attitude and commitment to MLK's learning community is greatly appreciated by all. Ms. Northrup, you are a true foundational piece to our building, and I truly appreciate everything that you do. I would like to introduce Mr. Michael Seiler, Principal of James Madison Primary School.
Good evening. I'm Mike Seiler, Principal of James Madison Primary School, and I have the privilege of introducing you to our Teacher there, Ms. Jamie Willenter, and she's our amazing art teacher. They say that a picture is worth a thousand words, so I thought that it was amazing that our students decided to create a wordle of all the words that describe Ms. Willenter. The three words that appeared the most were artistic, creative, and kind, and I couldn't agree more. As a creative artist, she has made her mark on JMP in several ways. She has transformed our hallways into bright works of art that not only make you feel welcomed, but they also encourage our students to do their best. Parents and visitors constantly comment on how bright and welcoming our school is, and it has to do a lot with her masterpieces. Ms. Willenter also creates exceptional backdrops for our annual musical, which helps set the tone for creating wonderful productions. In addition, she coordinates our annual art show that puts hundreds of students' masterpieces on display for families to enjoy. As for the word "kind" being the number-one word to appear, you could not find a better word to describe Ms. Willenter. Her kindness shows in the way that she approaches her teaching and in the way that she works with both the students and staff of JMP. She truly cares about each individual within our community, and she's constantly thinking of new and innovative ways for students to showcase their creativity. She truly loves what she does, and it shows in her work. In fact, the wordle masterpiece that was created includes a quote that sums everything up: "By doing what you love, you inspire and waking the hearts of others." And finally, a tidbit about her, well, she's also a Mets fan, but I want to take this time to remind her that there's 116 games left, and the Phillies are still in first, and you're six and a half games back. But I'm sure you'd much rather the Teacher of the Year award than a World Series, so And at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian McGrath, Principal of Herbert Hoover Middle, Herbert Hoover Middle School. You'll get it, thank you.
Good evening. As the Principal of Herbert Hoover Middle School, I'm proud to recognize Ms. Christina Cordero as our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Cordero is a selfless special education teacher who wakes up each morning with the courage and resolve to follow her life's calling. In her professional life, Ms. Cordero's calling manifests as a teacher who provides boundless hope and inspiration to her students and colleagues. However, in her personal life, Christina counterbalances that abundance of positivity with the negative, soul-crushing experience of being a lifelong fan of the New York Football When Ms. Cordero isn't teaching or hopelessly looking to the next season, she can be found distributing food to the homeless in Newark where she started her very own charity. I'm going to go off-script for a very brief moment. At the beginning of this evening, you saw the video presentation where Ms. Cordero spoke about the students who come back, and they share with her where they are in life. Every few weeks, the bell rings and we look out and we see a face that we may remember, we may not, and without fail, they ask to go and see Ms. Cordero. In education, we talk about data and metrics and how we know if what we're doing is successful. I'm not sure if there is a better metric of success in this industry than the number of students who come back to share with you the great things that they are accomplishing because of your work. So for that reason and so many more, I present to you Ms. Cordero, Herbert Hoover Middle School Teacher of the Year. I would now like to call to the lectern my esteemed colleague, Ms. Valentine, from John
Hello, everyone. I am Mrs. Valentine, proud Principal of John Adams Middle School. It is my honor to introduce the John Adams Middle School 2018-19 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Melissa Orzakowski. Thank you. Mrs. Orzakowski is every principal's dream teacher. She is hardworking, upbeat, personable, knowledgeable, resourceful, and says yes to anything asked of her. One of Mrs. Orzakowski's biggest strengths is her ability to make connections with students, not only personally, but through mathematical connections, not an easy task. She goes out of her way to show students she cares, often attending school competitions and events outside of the school day. Mrs. Orzakowski has served as advisor for student council for seven years and has helped facilitate yearly food drives, dances, and various talent shows. She has taken the lead on various building and district initiatives and also mentors both teachers and students. Mrs. Orzakowski piloted three new clubs, including coding, robotic engineers, and the esteemed math competition club. It's no wonder that Mrs. Orzakowski turned out to be so jamazing since aside from having an awesome set of parents to raise her, she is also an Edison product. She was a student at Martin Luther King School, John Adams Middle School, and a graduate of J.P. Stevens High School. I am so fortunate and grateful that Mrs. Orzakowski chose John Adams Middle School as her second home. When she's not busy changing the lives of all of our students and those around her, she loves to travel, spend time with her awesome husband, and cook in her new kitchen. Congratulations, Mrs. Orzakowski, on this well-deserved award. And now, Mrs. Mden from Thomas Jefferson Middle School.
I always feel so tall with this microphone here. Can you hear me? Okay, wonderful. All right, good evening. My name is Antoinette Mden, and I'm honored to recognize Mrs. Stacy Vavadikoff, Thomas Jefferson Middle School's Teacher of the Year. I'd like to thank Edison Board of Education and Mr. Saxton for providing an opportunity for us to recognize and celebrate excellence in education. Long before we had teacher evaluation tools that defined what effective teaching and learning looks like in the classroom, Mrs. Vavadikoff was recreating dynamic art lessons that were standards-based, engaging for learners, relevant, and connected to the real world. An example of this is her eighth-grade art unit centered around social commentary. The unit starts with an essential question: Do artists have a role in reflecting and commenting on a society in which they live? Students are taken on a rollercoaster ride of learning that enables them to answer the essential questions while learning art technique and current artists like Sanaz Mazanani and Bansky, and I know who they are. To see Ms. Vavadikoff in action facilitating her lessons is truly a work of art. Because of Ms. Vavadikoff, I no longer have pink tiles throughout my school building. We now have beautiful pieces of art created by our students. Ms. Vavadikoff is not only proud of the magic she creates in the classroom, but also the relationships she has developed with students, her mentee, and the school community. We all love working with her. An interesting fact about Ms. Vavadikoff is that she has collected over 50 family recipes and anecdotes for each recipe for a cookbook she plans to get published in the near future. She also has had numerous pieces of her own art displayed in art galleries in the East and West Coast. I am truly honored to have Ms. Vavadikoff in my building. She is a dynamic teacher as well as a quality friend and person. Congratulations, Mrs. Vavadikoff. You are truly deserving of the Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd like to call to the podium, Mrs. Blevins, Assistant Principal of Woodrow
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Blevins. I'm the Assistant Principal at Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and it is my privilege to introduce the Woodrow Wilson Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Wendy Hurwitz. In Mrs. Hurwitz's seventh-grade Social Studies classroom, ancient history comes alive. When I visit her classroom, I never know if I will participate in a Japanese tea ceremony, listen to a rap song about Genghis Khan, or perform an ancient African tribal dance. She is passionate about what she teaches and engages students in a fun and creative way each and every day. Her passion for history transcends the classroom. She has been the vision and drive behind the National History Day Club at Woodrow Wilson and J.P. Stevens, this year sending five students to compete at Nationals. An interesting fact is that Mrs. Hurwitz is our in-house yogi, working with students and teachers before school to relieve stress and anxiety. She has also led her colleagues across the district on yoga and mindfulness practices by teaching relevant PDIs on such topics. Her impact is felt far and wide throughout the school and districts, district. Congratulations to Mrs. Hurwitz, Woodrow Wilson Middle School Teacher of the Year. I am now going to introduce Mr. Charlie Ross, Principal of Edison High School.
Good evening. I speak this evening for the thousands of Eagles, the generation of Edison youth, and the literally dozens of district teachers and administrators who first learned their craft under the guidance of Ms. Kathleen Hendricks, Edison High's Teacher of the Year. Pardon me as I steal some lyrics from the title song of one of the greatest teaching movies ever made, but I think they fit perfectly. How do you thank someone who has taken you from crayons to perfume? It isn't easy, but I'll try. Running our child development classes, which include live preschoolers, Ms. Hendricks is a woman of seemingly endless energy, unparalleled dedication, and an ability to get adolescents to tap into their empathy and begin to teach. Teaching is a noble profession, and Ms. H sets the noblest example. There's a special type of Edison High School graduation photo where the fully-grown eagle in cap and gown is juxtaposed to the preschool eagle sitting on our stage 13 years earlier. Ms. Hendricks installs deep meaning into both moments. Even more amazing is that in her 50th year of teaching, she how deeply she continues to connect with our school community, from sitting in the stands rooting our boys on in away football games, attending concerts and plays, helping FCCLA students serve our secret recipe punch at Honor Society and Awards luncheons Thursday night? Okay, good. To working Saturday attentions and even helping to cheer on our Lady Eagles at county championships games, Ms. Hendricks, even though she's taught at all six Edison secondary schools, is an eagle through and through. As the song says, she's been a friend who's taught us right from wrong and weak from strong, and that's a lot to learn. strong, and that's a lot to learn. What can we give you in return? If you wanted a moon, we'd try to make a start, but I'd rather you let me give my heart. Ms. Hendricks, with love. And now, I turn it over to our host, Ms. Gail Polikowski, Principal, J.P. Stevens.
Good evening. It is a privilege to introduce the John P. Stevens High School Teacher of the Year, Mr. David Marzano. Mr. Marzano graduated college with a math degree and a teaching certificate, but chose to continue his baseball career and successfully played in the minor league. At the time, teenagers were smoking cigarettes by the packs. Since Mr. Marzano was a prominent player, he was asked to participate in an anti-smoking campaign. His was the face placed on posters and billboards, and his was the voice on the radio, warning teenagers about the dangers of smoking. He knew this had a positive impact on teenagers at the time, and therefore continued this important work, suggesting to us, the administration, to run an anti-vaping campaign with our athletes. This is just one example of the kind of educator he is. He cares about students, the whole student, the whole package. His goal is to educate them while helping them to develop character and guiding them to make healthy choices. Algebra II is a difficult course, but not if you are fortunate to have Mr. Marzano. He breaks down the concepts into manageable parts and gives the students all the support they need to be successful. And the whole time, he remains calm and kind. Mr. Marzano also serves as our varsity baseball coach. This year, he earned his two-hundredth career win. This is quite an accomplishment for a coach. But another accomplishment, one you won't find in the newspapers, the one being recognized this evening, is his two-thousandth-plus win, each win representing a student who has left his class in the past June's with effective study skills, a strong understanding of math, and a desire to continue to develop and strengthen their character, all learned from Mr. Marzano, math teacher, coach, and role model. Congratulations, Mr. Marzano. It is now my privilege to introduce Ms. Catherine Swayze.
My name is Kathy Swayze. I'm the administrator at the FDR Building, and they save the best for last. I'd like to introduce Ms. Abby Dunnington, who is a preschool teacher in an inclusive setting. I could go on and on and on and on about preschool, but for those of you that know preschool, we have a lot of moving parts. And fortunately, Abby moves right with them. No matter if it's the front door, children crying, parents, whatever it is, whatever they need, Ms. Abby produces. The most important thing that I can tell you about Ms. Abby is she's an inclusive educator who loves her children and teaches to their strengths, not their weaknesses. Thank you, Ms. Abby, from the bottom of my heart for taking care of all my babies at the FDR Building. We love you.
My heart is happy. We are thankful to all of you for all that you do every day.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers I would recognize today, and it is your hard work. You inspire all these kids in our district. You made a big difference in their lives. And I also like to thank all the family members. I see a lot of family members with them. I thank you for all the sacrifices you have made to support them. Thank you very much. For now, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll go on to the regular agenda items. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to continue our normal agenda. So first up, the approval of the minutes, April tenth and fifteenth, and the board secretary's report. Do I have a motion on that? Okay, Ms. Arico, second. Okay, Dr. Chen.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Maroni?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Well, yes.
I'd like to propose to add a agenda item, which is not on the agenda, which is the discussion of the school calendar. So do I have a second? Anybody? Okay, Ms. Conway? I'm first, Ms. Conway.
Yes.
Okay, so do you need to have a vote, or we can discuss?
No, first you can discuss.
Okay. So now, we're going to open up the discussion for the resolution. I think the public also has this revised calendar. I know there's a mistake on it. On the twenty-fourth, we have a day off, okay? So right now, the calendar is not, but we do have a day off, so it's the typo on here. The items we're going to discuss here is the June fifth to the June fourth date, okay? So now, we are open, you know, anyone have any comments on the resolutions? Please go to the podium.
Don't we get to go first?
Yes, we can go first. Yes, we go first. Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. The only question I have is, this calendar was established quite a while ago, and the dates were voted on and approved. I realize the change and adding the twenty-fourth off is due to the unused snow day, which is a positive item, but I'm kind of questioning the change of the Eid celebration, and if it was the wrong day to begin with, I'm sorry. And if you have a good reason for it, I'll gladly listen to it, but my only problem was, if I put myself into a parent or a teacher at this point in time, making arrangements for whether it be childcare, doctor care, or anything along those lines, at this point in time is rather late. So could you kind of explain to us why this change was made in the first place?
Yeah, there are three reasons for this. First, we all know June fourth is the election day, and we did not have a good experience last time when we had the school in session and the election going on at the same time. We did not have a police presence in a lot of schools. So that is the safety concern of our students. I do realize this is a last-minute change, but originally, we thought this election could be a small turnout, but given what's going on, seems that's going to be a very contentious election. And also, then, looked into having police presence in our schools during the election day. And I think the cost is nine thousand dollars, if that's correct. It's nine thousand dollars additional on top of that. And third is the Eid. When we set up the calendar, when we did our Google and from the community, it was on the fifth. But recently, you know, we reached out to the community, and they said, actually, it's on the fourth, because the, you know, forgive me if I'm wrong, the movement and stuff, they finally realized it is the fourth, not the fifth. So it'll be actually helping the community if we move it to the fourth. And I do realize that, you mentioned, a lot of the parents who made the arrangements, and our staff also, you know, since it's a day off, some of them, they do not observe that day. They probably made some arrangements for doctor visits and all of that. Those are the individual items. I think we can work it out with our staff members. If they have appointments and stuff, just show it to our HR. That'll be working that out, yeah. And we'll be more than happy to work out the inconvenience with all the staff members.
So the question I have is that the state puts out every year a list of approved holiday dates that they approve, and this is not the first time that we have been off the mark regarding the celebration of a holiday. So I just want to know, are we referring to the state calendar of approved holidays when we make the calendar?
The answer is yes, but I was told that it's hard to predict this, you know, just, again, that's what I was told, that, you know, it's hard for them to predict way ahead of time. So the feedback from the community is that the Eid is actually on the fourth. So that's, you know, the third reason of this change. But the main, the top two reasons are the election and the police coverage and the cost. Yeah, anybody else, the board members on the resolutions? I actually have a question for Jean. The junior? Yes, okay. So on the agenda, we have the approval of the approved, you know, school facility project, which is outbound referendum. We discussed heavily about the scope, right? So my question to you is, I know we need to submit by the end of this month to get things rolling, to meet the September timeline. So my question to you is, this first submission, is that mainly the scope, and also, is the dollar amount going to be part of this submission as well? Is it possible we can relook at some of the proposed improvements for the facilities, like paving and stuff, you know, to see if we can reduce the dollar amount a little bit? And I had a conversation with you. I'm glad that you dropped the total dollar amount dropped probably by two million dollars. It's one eighty-nine-five, right? So that is a good direction, is keep going down. But, you know, so that's my question is, you know, if we have any additional discussions, can we resubmit the dollar amount to the state?
The answer is yes and no, because the state obviously works with school districts.
Move it up a little bit.
Sorry.
Do you want to take it out? Yeah.
I'm trying to take it out. The answer to your question is a bit of a yes and no, because the state is looking for a complete application, so that the approval process just happens once. So they would really, and the costs are a requirement for the submission, is the scope plus the cost, plus, you know, all the components that go into it, the educational specification, those diagrams that have to do with the layout, and proving that you have the capacity needs with the demographics. So all those are the components. At the same time, the state realizes that they're going to have review comments, and they may have comments that will change the numbers. So there is a process at the end, when the state has its review and comments, where the board can revisit the number and put a different number on the ballot. And that's really the opportunity you have for that the ballot number does not go on. This is the number that has to go down to the state, complete with the drawings, but the number that goes on the ballot can be less. In fact, you can even choose not to go ahead with a project or two, even if it has state approval, until a later time. So you can elect to go out for four schools out of the six, or whatever the board's pleasure is. So that you're still in control. So if you're looking for a lower number, you may also want to consider that for part of it.
Yeah, you know, I don't know how much we can, because you already did, you know, the initial thing, it's a couple million dollars. It is a good thing.
And I should say that, but of course, every time you do change or take more time to zero in, it puts more pressure on those referendum dates. Because the one for the, that we're shooting for is like the most optimal date, which is as streamlined as possible, and that's requiring the state to be very supportive with that and really do an expeditions review. That's requiring the town planning board to give a letter early on after they hear their presentation in June. So there's a lot of things that have to be followed to place. If the board needs more time to really kind of enact a number, then it may put pressure on moving to the second referendum date. So just wanted to keep that in mind with your discussions.
Okay. So when you did the presentation last week, there were the base construction and improvements, plus there's some alternate, right?
That's right.
And then, there's a couple million dollars for the vestibules and stuff like that.
Right.
So when we're submitting this, what are we submitting? Are we submitting all three? Are we submitting one, two?
At this time, basically, what I heard from the last time, we're recommending that you just go with the baseline, because it didn't sound that you had the consensus on the board to go to the bigger plan. And I actually thought that Ms. Arico's comments on the security is that there may be some other alternative funding sources. And also, the security upgrade, you may want to act sooner than you would under a referendum. The referendum would lock you into not doing this work till three years from now.
Sure.
You know, potentially, where you can move a lot faster on some other alternative things on those securities. So it makes sense to pull this, is, security is important, but not necessarily tied into a referendum. And so, right now, that's what the one-eighty-nine-five-hundred was for that baseline at the sixth school that we showed. All the diagrams that we showed, that was really the base of it.
Okay, thank you. So, all right. Any other board members have any comments? Yes, foul. Foul. Is that you?
What's that?
Who raised a hand?
You got a question? Yeah?
I have a few questions, actually. I guess I'll start with the, I'm not really quite sure what we're voting on when it comes to the approval of the proposed school facilities project. I think the new number I heard just now is one-eighty-nine-five-hundred, but then we're also going back and forth with different things that we may be able to reduce. So are we voting on a final number today, or what?
The one-eighty-nine-five-hundred-thousand was the number for all those diagrams that we showed. So everything that we showed with school by school on the six projects, that included the description that we had for both the net gain of spaces, the changes to some of the fields and locations on the site, that's all inclusive in that number. What we were talking about is that it's potentially that some of the soft costs could be tightened up a bit, as I assume that's what Ms. Shi is talking about. At this point, to reduce the actual cost of a project, we would have to reduce square footage. In other words, the base construction cost would not be changing. So the construction cost, that factor within the one-eighty-nine-five-hundred-thousand would really go with what is down at the State Department of Education.
So is this just basically to give approval for you to go to the State Department?
Yes. This is a, remember, this is a two-step process. The first step for the board's approval is just permission to go to the state and have the state review it and confirm, yes, you have the demographic need, yes, this is a reasonable plan, and yes, this is enough finances that you can actually implement this plan. That's what you're basically voting on, is that approval to get to that point where the state comes back and says, yes, we agree that you have the capacity need, you have the right plan, and you have appropriate costs for that plan. At that point, when that happens, the board then would have another vote to put it on the referendum. This vote tonight is not to put it on the referendum. It's the vote just to submit it to the state for the option to put it on a referendum ballot. It is a two-step party. Does that clarify what you were really going after?
Yeah, but I also wanted to go back to the calendar. I don't know if I should go back. Where, can I talk about?
Say, I'm sorry?
I also want to comment about the calendar.
Ah, calendar, yeah, go back, yes, I'm sorry. Calendar, yeah, go back, yes, I'm sorry. Any of the resolutions, yes.
Okay, I have some questions about that. How are we going to deal with the date for Eid going forward if we're never really sure year to year what, you know, what date it's going to fall on? The other concern I have is, is the plan to give off every election for the primaries? Because how are we going to deal with the cost of security if we're not giving every election day off? And how are we planning on notifying the parents of the change? Because it's coming up very quickly.
See, the first question regarding the date, I actually have spoke to some of the folks in the community. They have promised me that it's not going to happen again, that, you know, we got notified at the last minute. So hope moving forward, that will not be an issue. As far as the primary goes, it happens every two years. We don't know how the calendar is going to shape up in the, you know, two years down the road. Hope some of the holidays is going to fall on the weekends, and hope that we can also work with Rutgers to move our graduation onto Friday instead of Wednesday, so it can gain a couple of days, and it will be helping the parents as well, because in the, when you finish the school in the middle of the week, there's no camps, nothing's open in the middle of the week, and the parents need to take a couple of days off for that. So, but next year, unfortunately, Rutgers has Friday already arranged, so we are moving back to Wednesday. But proactively down the road, we should tell them that we want to reserve the Friday to move the graduation back, so we'll get, have a couple extra days in our hands we can play with. What was the third question, I'm sorry?
How are we going to notify parents of this date change, because it's coming up rather quickly?
Yeah, see, notification, I guess we have to go through the district emails, we post on the website, we hope that, you know, with the live TV going on, people will notice that as well, if we actually approve that. I do notice this, you know, I do know this is a last-minute change, and I do apologize for the inconvenience to the parents and our staff members. But, you know, the reason I put it out is, you know, the security, the cost, those are the two main concerns, you know, for the move. Yeah, Rich, you have questions? Teresa, yes?
Yeah, can I just follow up on the, on your question? Your first question was, you go to the state with 189.5 million. Okay, comes back to us. We say we get it down to 105 million, 190, 85 million, rather. What I want to know is, are we bound by that 189.5, or can we change that?
I hope it's not going to go up. If it comes down, I'd go for it.
Well, yes. No, at the moment it comes back to you from the state with the approval of it, you can change it.
Okay.
And, but, just realize, there's an implication to the change that might have a time implication. In other words, if you change it substantially from what went down to the state and reduce the scope, other than dropping a whole project, and we can tell the state, we're just not going to, we're going to do five out of the six, the state has a right to say, send it back down to us and have us another look to it. So it can add time. You have control over the money, but it could add time to the timeline. So I just want to make sure you're sure, I'm not trying to scare you into anything, but I just want to be very clear that that, if, depending on what you change, it could have an implication. If it's a very simple change, a slight adjustment, or a change in some soft cost, that's probably something that's done with a letter to the state, and it's not a big deal. But if it's a major change, it might open a door of actually a re-review by the state official.
Yeah, I think-
Okay, but we have the option.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Absolutely, you are completely in control of that. And in fact, you are in complete control as to whether you ever go forward on a referendum. That is still your decision, and that's not what the vote is tonight. Tonight is just the option to do a referendum in the future, based on going through the step of having the Department of Education review your projects.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, when it comes to the timeline that, you know I'm interested in that. So when do we have to have a meeting for the whole board, so that every board member understands where the 189 million dollars is going? Whether it's in paving, or fields, or additions, or air conditioning? That when they go out into the public, and the public will ask them, they can actually ask that question. When could we have a meeting, so we could have that, so we could really establish probably what that final number would be, that you could still get the referendum for September? Would we need an emergency meeting for tomorrow? Or would June, the first week in June, or the second week in June be okay?
Yeah, we have our scheduled meeting on June 12th, okay? We can use that opportunity to, you know, get familiar, get the public to familiar with the detailed plan if they need to. And some of the board members who are not involved in the discussions, you know, me and Rich, we probably had more discussions than you, you're probably sick and tired of us. But some of the other board members, they probably do not have that opportunity, probably a little bit more explanation. If we have the meeting on June 12th, is that too late? We can always have, you know, special meeting for that, but, you know, tonight, if we approve the submission, and we have detailed discussions at the June 12th meeting, I hope our scope is fine, I don't want to touch our scope too much, and it's just some soft cost, some of the, you know, the facility things with the paving and stuff, we can look into it. Is June 12th too late, or you, yeah?
Well, I would be suggesting as early as possible, because one of the things is, as soon as you have a number, and this number, once it goes down to the state, is a public number.
Yes.
It's something that's going to be in your board minutes. That will be a number that the public remembers, and, you know, and we basically do have the breakdown per school, and we have it in big, broad components, which Heather can kind of read off. We were planning to do a PowerPoint, but actually didn't realize that your security system is such that you can't take PDFs or PowerPoint documents, so we have it literally on a laptop. But if you want to have a more in-depth conversation and meeting on it, I would say the earliest as possible. The one thing I want to make sure is that this, whatever that discussion is, and any change, the earlier we can get it down to the state during the review, it'll be much more seamless that they won't ask for a re-review, because we basically get the number down before they even look at the numbers, as they're looking at the ed specs and the other components of the project. If we can slip in and say, we made this one adjustment, that's a lot easier to handle. The other is, basically, is that this number, this package goes as it is to the town planning board. So you would certainly have to have your discussion and a finalization of that before we do their public presentation, which is June 17th, so the 12th would be before the 17th, which is a good thing for that. But I really would say, you know, the earlier, the better.
Okay, so we can, we can look into, you know, the board members' feedback, whether we, you know, will need a special meeting or not, but we can, yeah, we can schedule that. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a statement, because since the last board meeting, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this referendum, as I'm sure my colleagues on the board have, and I have spoken to a couple of board members. When I think back to the $23 million that we asked the public for back when James Monroe burned down, and the struggle that it was to get that referendum passed for a school that had burned down, and I look ahead now to 189.5 million, it's really a staggering amount of money. And I think that when the public hears the figure, they're going to be dumbstruck. That being said, on the other side of the coin, just this evening, I was talking to Mr. Scully, the principal of Lincoln School, and he was telling me that they're at critical mass, and they're going to have to have 36 students in a class if they don't get an addition soon. And Woodrow Wilson, at 1,300 students, when I was the vice principal there, we weren't even at 1,000 yet. You know, so these schools are now at critical mass, and because we haven't done anything, anything on a huge level up to this point, that is how we got to where we are now. So that is my thought process, and I'm sure that every other citizen in Edison, you know, is considering that. And then also, I want to add that we had the parents coming to speak about the busing and the increase to subscription busing, and my heart goes out to them. When we were campaigning two years ago and went to a lot of the homes of people in the area, my taxes are high, but they aren't half as high as what a lot of the people in Edison are paying. So I can honestly feel and understand when they say, oh my God, oh my God, you know, how am I going to pay this? So this is a very complex situation, and so I just wanted the public to hear what we're all thinking and talking about. This is not a simple, oh yeah, we're just going to slap on 189 million dollars to the public.
Right, yeah, and I really, and that's one reason why I wanted to say, the board still has that control of what they put on the ballot, that you can elect to put just the two high schools on, for example, and do it staggered, or you can realize that, wait a minute, Lincoln is so critical that we have to act on that. You know, there's, I don't like to pit schools against each other, but you can also take a look at that in your assessments, but I agree that this is a tough decision for you as a board, because it's a combination of building for the past deficiencies that you have, the high class sizes that you already have, plus where the students are really coming in the critical areas of the middle schools and the high schools, that's really going to exacerbate the problem. So it is long overdue, and that's what, why it's that accumulation of such a high number. But I understand that you still have that, it's such a big number, and you might have to depackage or really communicate it in a packaged way.
Yeah, Jean, I'm not looking to do one school, or whatever it is like that. I mean, what happened was, I guess, last Wednesday evening, right, we were presented with 190, maybe 189 million dollars.
Ninety-one.
Right, you know, basically written up into seven lines on a piece of paper saying, you know, here you go. I agree we have the overcrowding problem, I want to take care of it, but that's kind of like just writing a blank check without explaining it to the board members. You know, like, you know I asked you if we could have done that a month before, and you came to us and explained to all of us. Because I wanted us to be fully aware of what we were kind of voting on and moving ahead with. So without affecting that September date, when do we need to have you come in to a closed meeting with us to explain all of this, so we can all get on board with it?
Well, let's target a special meeting in the first week of June.
Would that, would that still get us to that September then?
I'm not going to guarantee September for you, because it's out of my control. If I could guarantee it, great. The September date is if things fall into place perfectly for you in terms of the state review, as well as the planning board commons getting to the state, as well as working with your, when you put a-
So right now, if we approve this right here, right now?
Yes, we have a-
You're not guaranteeing September anyway?
We have a shot at September, more comfortable. What could I guarantee? I can guarantee the second date, December, because December gives us another couple months.
So we missed that date because of whatever it was for us to get our information together to get to this point.
And we were really tight, because for the guarantee submission, we would have had to been with everything, all the numbers figured out back in March.
Right, see, this is where I'm going with the timeline, and I want to nail you down to it.
Absolutely.
Because we went through this earlier, and I nailed down the timeline that we really had to be like around February to where we are today. And what happened?
Absolutely.
You know, I don't know. So can we set up like a special meeting in that first week, and maybe you guys can block out a couple hours for us?
Do you want to go through anything today?
What I'm, what I'm wondering, Richard, is we, we handed out the detailed estimates last Wednesday.
Right.
Is that what you want to go through, line by line?
Well, not actually that line by line, because you have about 14 lines, right? And to be honest with you, when I say I want to look at 190 million dollars?
So this is-
Maybe in more like, like 20 million dollar increments, as opposed to-
So, but at this stage, and Jean, Jean has a little bit more experience than I do, but at this stage, typically, you're not going to get a construction bid, right? These are, because the projects are not designed in great detail, right there.
Well, I guess here's my question. You have interior renovations, 10 million dollars, right? Why not make it 20, or why not make it 5?
No, it-
And we haven't had that discussion, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I understand, so a meeting would be very helpful, so we could probably, we do have that information ready to go, so that's why I'm saying, as soon as possible is the best for us. I happen to be away the week of June 1st, but Heather's here, and she's missed numbers, so, and we'll have Marcus and Scott and from office, we have plenty of people that can help with the discussion on the numbers. And, but we can tell you exactly, that 10 million dollars renovation, what does it mean? What are we renovating? What's the square footage? What's our multiplier? We have all that information, but this way we can do it in a very detailed fashion, we have no problem with that.
Right, I don't know that you necessarily have to be there, I'm sure your staff, you know, they're the ones that put it all together.
Absolutely.
To do our presentation, so that would be good.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah, no, but we're ready to do that, as soon as you're ready to meet, we have that information, that's been prepared, so we are ready for that.
Jean, what about the margin of error? What's the comfort level regarding the margin of error? We have about three different variations coming up. You go out on bid, your bid could be off by 3 million dollars.
That's exactly-
The other thing, we get into value engineering, on the Rainbow project, I had a million dollars value engineering that was off. How can you speculate? We constantly are doing the Texas two-step, and we don't even know what the heck we're talking about. Take your best shot, I think the 189.5 is reasonable, we could come out low, we could come out in a high side, but there's a long journey ahead of us before that number is nailed down.
Right.
And we're trying to nail it down now, it doesn't work that way.
All right, so the other thing we can do is, we can have it next week. You're going to be here next week, you'll have a special meeting next week, do we have enough time to, yeah, we have enough time to-
Yes, from here on.
Yeah.
The last week of May, sure.
Yeah, so let's pick a date on the last week of May. I, you know, I probably have more exposure on this than any, you know, probably Rich is the same level than some of the other board members out here, because we had a lot of discussions, finance facility, and we had our one-on-ones, and I have my phone calls with you. So let's take another look at the, you know, the last week of May. Meanwhile, let's, we can just go ahead and, you know, put this one at the resolution, submit it, and hope that we can bring it down a little bit, you know, even a little bit, it's helping us.
Okay.
Because we do need to be responsible, and it is a big number. You know, it's going to be a hit to the tax page.
Absolutely, yeah.
But just to add on what Beth said, it's a hard decision, you look at it both ways, it's neglected for the past 10 years, or maybe longer. We did put two smaller additions, well, actually four additions, if you count the JP and the Edison High, the science wins in the back, the two additions for Menlo and Woodbrook.
Right.
Just to go to Paul's point, when we actually planned for Woodbrook, that was a 9 million dollar projection, by the end, we were bid 11 million dollars, so it was 2 million dollars higher than what was planned. So we have to keep all of those in our consideration as well. So, but let's have another look on the last week of this month, and educate some of the other board members to go into more details, let's, you know, to see if we can cut down a little bit.
I think that's a good suggestion, and I really want the board to be fully comfortable with these numbers, because you're going to be put on the spot, you're going to be asked lots of questions for the public, so the more you know, the better, so, yes, that makes a lot of sense.
And again, I just want to put this into perspective, that the estimate right now is based on the demographic study.
That's correct, that is correct.
I'm going to, I don't know how many times I'm going to emphasize this, if the demographic study is off, we're off, okay? I also heard recently, the developer has bought a land in the corner of Woodbrook, no, Woodland and Inman, near the golf course, on the northwest part of Edison. That's an area, not a lot of people go there, okay? A big land. I don't know what they're building, okay? I am pretty sure, I'm pretty sure, that's not the, our demographic study.
No.
So we're going to keep a watchful eye to the zoning board, and how they're going to prove, and what are they going to prove? Hope it's not going to be a massive 220-year- Hope it's not going to be a massive two-hundred-and-twenty unit apartment buildings that we're having at the end of Jackson Avenue. So that's, you know, you know, we have to keep a look on that. And also, Dan, can you help us, in two thousand and eight, that was the last failed referendum, right? And how much was the dollar amount?
We actually, in two thousand, December of two thousand and eight, we went out for referendum, we actually had two questions. One was a hundred and thirty-three million dollars, and was given, putting a small addition on almost every school except for Woodrow Wilson. And we had a second question for twenty-nine million dollars, that was for a new elementary school behind Thomas Jefferson Middle School. However, both of them went down more than two to one.
Yeah, so if I add it correctly, it'll be a hundred and sixty-two million dollars at that time.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, so just put that ten years ago. That was not approved, you know, just to put that into perspective, we're asking one eighty-nine-five. Yes, it's a twenty million dollar increase, but that was in a ten years, ten years ago price. I do understand it's a big dollar amount, but just put things into perspective. The two additions that we put it in, Woodbrook and Menlo, we didn't go out and bond, we basically paid by cash, so I usually say that it just, the energy, you know, the thing like you go out and buy a car, right, you're going to lease it, or you're going to buy it. And we bought a car for those two additions instead of leasing, that's why we took a, taxpayer took a bigger hit with those. And hope with this one, we're bonding, so it's a stretch out the tax burden a little bit, you know, reduce the tax burden a little bit for the taxpayers.
That's correct, yeah. I mean, basically, you want to have, with a thirty-year projection, you want the next generation to be also paying for the facilities that they're going to be gainfully using.
So before we actually get into more discussion, I'd like to, Dan, to share with everyone, what is this impact mean, this one eighty-nine-five impact mean to the taxpayers? So, Dan?
Okay, I had our financial advisor, in case you work up the numbers for me, I had him work up a number based on a hundred and eighty-nine million, five hundred thousand dollars, with the ratables of seven billion, one hundred and ninety-four million, which is our actual ratables this year, with a debt service rate coming back to the district of fifteen percent, for an average home of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, and the debt, and the interest rate estimated to be a three-point-six-six percent, the impact for the average home would be two hundred and twenty-three dollars a year for thirty years.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is two hundred and twenty-three, it's not a small dollar amount. A lot of the houses are much more than one seventy-eight-three, so, you know, but this is something that has been going on for a long time, and we also like to thank our planning board for continuing to overcrowding our schools. And this is the action of what you're doing. Don't blame the board, look for yourselves, and I really challenge the planning board members, come into our schools, getting, visit our school when the school's in session, all right? Stay in the hallways, and then you go back, you make your decision whether you are saying okay to these builders on these houses. Take a look at our schools, stay in our building. I don't know, when was the last time any of those zoning members stepped their foot into our schools? You got to be here to understand why we're doing this. Thank you. Any other board members' comments? All right, now, we'll open up for public comments on all the resolution items. Nobody? Resolutions only? Only resolutions, if you're coming to talk about buses, we could deal with that later. Okay, so, all right, so let's go to the vote on this. So first, the personnel report, I always try to take that apart. So can I have a motion just on the personnel report? Okay? Mrs. Ward, second. Mrs. Maroni.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erika?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I'd like to say a couple words, really, we don't do this, but today I'm going to say something here. We have three very important positions that's been appointed today. One is our chief academic officer, and we are very glad that we appointed our JP Stevens principal, Gail Polakowski, to the position. Gail, can you please stand? I'm so glad she, you know, stepped up to take on this more responsibilities. You know, Gail has been running the JP Stevens for a long time, and she's done, you know, this is one of the best high schools in the state, and I said to her when she came for the interview, and I said, why do you want to do this? You can run the JP Stevens while you're sleeping. And she said, because we're at the crossroad, she wants to make the district even better. And thank you for taking the step to come up, to do that. Next up is, you know, we just saw her presentation, she says she's assistant principal. Now, she will be the principal of Woodrow Wilson Middle School, Jennifer Blavens. Thank you for the well-deserved promotion. And the third is the very new position, the supervisor of the Twenty-First Century Skills, and Mrs. Pittenger, please stand up. We all know that the Twenty-First Century, the skills that are needed for our kids is probably not even existing yet. So we're tasking, you know, Mrs. Pittenger, to take our district moving forward into the Twenty-First Century. Thank you very much. All right, and the other thing is, all three of these people are promoted within, promoted within our ranks, and they started, you know, some teachers and stuff, they're moving up. So we'll continue to try to do this as much as we can, thank you. Okay, so next up, we're going to move to the administration items, which includes the approval of the proposed school facility project, and the newly amended school calendar, with June fourth as the holiday instead of June fifth, and the approval of independent medical evaluation, approval of leave of absence, settlement agreement with SK, memorandum agreement between education, law enforcement, authorization, the development of three-year comprehensive equity plan, the appointment of ESC and J representative, which is Beth, the revised table of organization, which is organization chart, twenty-nineteen summer hours, okay? And for the curriculum and instruction, we're approving textbooks, field trips, professional development. For out-of-district services, we have out-of-district, people and services, out-of-district placement, special education week, the special ed services. On the finance, we're approving the finance resolution, so everything on the agenda and adding the school calendar. Do I have a motion on that? Okay, Mr. Erika, second. Mrs. Maroni?
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
I do have a question on the organization chart.
Yes, yeah.
Under chief, oh, excuse me, under chief academic officers, elementary and secondary, they have summer programs, summer programs, the chief academic officers do more than summer programs, so why is that in one box?
It's a separate item, that's-
It should be a separate item.
Yes, it is, that's why it's in a separate box.
No, it's right in the same box.
Okay, it's part of, part of the, part of their responsibility, so, but that's what they do anyway.
But they do more than just summer school?
Yes.
And this box makes them look like they're just do summer school?
Yes, the problem is that the reader state is very tight on this. Okay, so Paul says more sad in that box.
I would take them out and make them separate.
Okay, thank you for the suggestion.
Okay.
Okay, so, you consider that? So, all right, we have two motions, so Dan, can you make the call?
All right, this is a vote for everything, including the new calendar.
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
No for everything?
The calendar.
No for the calendar, everything else okay?
I just have one question, and I'd like to make a statement on the special education week.
Yeah.
I think we need to be a little more astute as to when we are appreciating that week, and as far as I'm concerned, it was last week, and I would have appreciated it better if I appreciated it earlier. So I agree with it, but I would rather it be taken care of in a more proper, timely fashion in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Patel? Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes, with the change in the-
The organization chart, yes.
All right, Mr. Erika?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
Okay, so the next is the upcoming meetings, but keep in mind, we talked about we're going to have a special meeting in the last week of this month, so we're going to find a date that's working for everyone, so we'll post it, okay? And the regular meeting we have is on the June twelfth at seven o'clock in the Education Center. The next public meeting, I'm sorry, is June seventeenth, seven PM at Edison High. Next up, we have a couple committee reports. Finance Facilities Committee, Mr. Brescher?
We had a Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, five-one-nineteen, at three-thirty PM at the Education Center. In attendance, Jerry Shi, Teresa Ward, Richard Brescher, Yuna Chen, Paul Saxton, Dan Michaud, and Ken Taylor. The first item, Louis from Alamo and Rachel Caglee presented the proposals for a health insurance premium for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. Representatives from Cigna and Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield addressed the committee expanding their proposals. Item two, Chris Conklin presented his recommendations for OTPT services for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year, which included an appointment of two primary providers and three secondary providers. Number three, the committee reviewed construction estimates from SSP Architects for the proposed additions to Edison High School and JP Stevens High School in preparation for an anticipated vote on a bond referendum in September. Item four, Ken Taylor provided a status report of the FDR and Woodrow Wilson Middle School ten-room modular classroom additions to each, both of which are still on schedule for nine-one-nineteen completion. Five, the committee discussed the four school roof replacement projects that are scheduled for the summer of two thousand nineteen. The committee decided to award the bids for the Woodbrook and Edison High School projects and reject the current bids for Martin Luther King and Washington School projects, so that we can modify the specifications to a foam roofing system and rebid those projects. Six, the committee discussed the current food service contract with Chartwell's and decided to have a subcommittee meet with Chartwell's representative to negotiate a larger guaranteed return to the district and to discuss their strategy for increasing the students' participation in the school lunch program before considering renewing their contract for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And finally, the committee discussed a proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget and recommended additional reductions in which the health benefits allocation and textbook allocations would be reduced, but the allocations for building repairs and maintenance would be increased to allow for enhanced security and to provide for a more efficient operation of our schools. The net reduction to the budget was three hundred and sixty thousand. The meeting adjourned at seven-ten PM.
Okay, thank you. Next, the Transportation Committee, it's you again.
Okay. Transportation Committee meeting, we had on four-seventeen-nineteen at two PM at the Education Center. In attendance was Richard Brescher, Valgoni Patel, Teresa Ward, Elizabeth Conway, Dan Michaud, John Griffin, Cheryl Roxel, Lisa Erika, and Jim Burke. Number one, Richard Benedict gave the committee a status report on the Versatrans software conversion, which will provide computerized routing and GPS tracking capabilities. Conversation, the conversion is scheduled for July one implementation. Number two, the committee discussed the subscription busing notifications, which will be mailed to the parents on April twenty-ninth for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. There was a discussion about traffic congestion issues to and from Herbert Hoover Middle School, once the Camelot housing complex is completed at the foot of Jackson Avenue. Number three, the committee discussed the district's transportation obligation to homeless children when they are placed into a temporary living arrangement by the state but outside of Edison borders. Number four, the committee reviewed the status of bus drivers and bus aid applicants. Mr. Griffin had several applicants that he is screening and will shortly give them a road test in order to determine if they have the ability to safely transport an Edison students. Mr. Griffin's reported that the state has a new requirement for bus drivers that are over the age of seventy, from seventy to seventy-four years of age, they must have a additional physical annually, and the driver that is seventy-five or older must have two additional physicals annually. Number six, the committee discussed the problems that the district has been having in getting timely transportation for the district's athletic teams. Recently, the district has been utilizing route and bus company to fill the gap until a more permanent solution can be found. There's been some discussion about starting games a little later in the day in order to allow the buses to deliver the students home from school and then be able to take the students to the after-school activities, and that meeting adjourned at three-twenty-four PM.
Okay, thank you. So just a quick question on the Versatrans, so we will be using the new system, the new school year?
Yes.
Okay, so we have been paying the software for a couple years, have not been using Okay, so the bus driver, we're going to have some new bus driver, hope we can hire some. You mentioned about seventy-five and older, you'd say must have two additional physicals, so how many total, they're going to do three, or just two?
Three.
Three physicals a year?
They have to have a physical every time they had renewed their CDL license, but if you're seventy or seventy, over seventy-five, you have to have an additional physical every year, and two if you're over seventy-five.
Oh, wow, okay. That's, that's going to be a little tough, okay. All right, so the, since we are on the transportation, you know, yeah, let's go to the other committees, yeah. The next one is the safety, District Safety Committee. Who's going to do this?
Dan.
You want to do, Dan?
You're going to do the District Safety one?
I don't, I don't have safety.
Huh? There's a safety committee, I don't know what the safety committee, we don't have-
Well, Rich Pepe, Virginia White, Louis from Alamo, and Kathy Young are on the committee. So, do you want to read it, Dan?
Okay. So they already have a meeting.
We're only removing skills.
Yeah, I got it.
Not me.
Okay, District Safety Committee, they met on May fifteenth at ten AM. In attendance were Richard Pepe, Virginia White, Lou Alamo, and Kathy Young, along, I'm sure, with some board members, I'm assured are listed here. The discussion, the committee discussed new and open claims with the New Jersey School Insurance Group as the renewal statement of values and the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty coverage overview for the insurance coverages that we have for the next year. The committee discussed Cigna's one hundred thousand dollar wellness program and the gym equipment procurement forms. We want to make sure we use up that hundred thousand dollars that was given to the district from Cigna, we haven't used it at this point in time, but we did give them a- We haven't used it at this point in time, but we did give them a list of equipment we'd like to get for the schools, and we already are waiting for them to give us the approval. And they're going to actually do the purchasing and do the paying. So it doesn't have to go to bid from us because they're going to pay it directly. And the third item was the committee discussed Horizon's transition timeline and the health benefits contract sheet. So the Horizon's changeover hopefully will go a lot smoother than we did last year when we changed over to Cigna. And we're already in the midst of getting that stuff, all that stuff information transitioned from Cigna to Horizon. We had Horizon a couple, you know, a year or so ago, and we're expecting it to be a much smoother process.
Okay, thank you. So this is more of a Health Committee instead of Safety Committee, right? The name threw me off, okay? All right, Board Member comments. Yes, Mr. Maroni.
I want to congratulate all of the Teachers of the Year and make a couple of observations and comments. First of all, Mr. Shi pointed out that our three people who were moved forward tonight were in district people, you know, into higher positions and what they had, and I want to congratulate them as well. During the presentation, the little film we had, many of the Teachers of the Year commented that they were Edison graduates and had come up through the ranks. And there's no question that people love to come back and teach in the district in which they grow up. It's home. And I want, and I'm hoping that this board in continuing in the future will encourage our former students to come back and teach in Edison. I also want to say that I had the pleasure of visiting two classrooms this week late for my Read Across America because I was not able to make them during Read Across America Week. Had the great pleasure of being with Mr. M. Ronzi's fifth grade class at Lyndon Now, and those children were so delightful and excited about learning. It was just a pleasure to be there. And Mallory Kilroy, who is a teacher of very special ed students at the FDR Building, and I must tell you that watching our preschool teachers working with children who have not only communication deficiencies, but they have no attention span at all, and to have 12 of them in a room at one time, people cannot understand what it is like to be a teacher in these situations. So thank you to all of the teachers for another outstanding year, and we're just so proud of all of you.
Thank you. Any other Board Members? Yes, Mrs. Patel.
This District Safety Committee, who created this committee? Because I thought it goes through the President of the Board to create...
It's more of a Health Committee, it's not, it's not, it's, look at the agenda that's being discussed, it's not a Board Committee because we don't have a Safety Committee.
Right, okay, so I'm not sure why we have this.
That's probably, they talk about health coverage and those issues. Any other Board Members? Yeah, Mr. Erika.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Couple things. One, again, I would like to thank our two, our three new administrators that were voted on tonight. Congratulations, all well deserved. I know I was on the Personnel Committee with a few other Board Members, and you all very impressive, and congratulations. Two, I'd like to mention that I did receive an email from John Schrober, the class of 1966. He was very impressed with our Hall of Fame induction at Edison High School, our Athletic Hall of Fame induction. We actually had to drag him off the stage because he kept on story after story. He went from 1966, his life story from 66 to 2018. So, but it was a great night. He wrote a nice thank you letter to, I know, Mr. Sandell, who along with Mr. Ross put this back together after 10 years of an absence. So I'd like to thank Mr. Sandell and Mr. Ross again for getting this back up and running, and hopefully we can do this every couple of years. Thank you.
Okay. So I have something to say. On Wednesday, which is two days from now, at here, 6:30, the J.P. Stevens Band Program will present the 45th Annual Jazz Band Extraganza, featuring performance from the John Adams Woodrow Wilson Middle School Jazz Band and our award-winning high school jazz ensembles, followed by end of the evening jam session. So come here, Wednesday evening, 6:30, enjoy some jazz. Yes? Okay. So today we talked a little bit, you know, about the bus and the GPS. We have been trying to put the GPS on our buses for the parents to track. I don't know if the public knows that we are using 18 companies to do our daily transportation of the kids. We use about 300 buses, 380 buses, we have close to 500 routes. So it's a little bit harder for us to put, you know, require all the vendors to put the GPS on their buses meanwhile the other districts are not asking for it. And there are some logistic issues, if they put it down, they switch the bus to another district, you know, that you lose the tracking of that day. So I have sent emails to our Assembly, the woman Nancy Pinkin and Rob Karabincheck, I've been asking them to see if they can sponsor a bill that will require all buses in New Jersey to have GPS. The New York City in April, last April, they, actually this April, they approved that bill to have all the GPSs, you know, on the buses. If that, we can get that, that will actually help us on the tracking. But, you know, we do have some of our own buses. So starting next, the beginning of next school year, we will be doing some pilots with our own buses. We're targeting 10 buses. So the, once the device is placed on the buses and the app is available, we'll be sending notices to those parents who the children are using these buses. We want them to provide us with feedbacks as to the, you know, pros and cons and the pains of using these apps to track. The goal is to not have parents wait for 40 minutes for the bus. We all know when we have a delayed openings and stuff, the bus schedules are all messed up. So we try to see what we can do, but we can start with our own buses. Something else I want to say. Oh, the other thing is the, they call it Safety Committee, actually it's a Health Committee. Dan, can you share with the public what is the A4 surcharge and how much we've been paying that in the past couple of years?
The state has implemented what they call an A4 surcharge for any employee, any boards of education that is not in the state health benefits plan. And the reason for that charge is because the state covers employees that retire that in the, in the teacher's pension and annuity fund. However, they don't put into it because they don't participate in the state health benefits plan, so they charge, they hit you with a surcharge to cover the health costs for the retirees that are not in the state health benefits plan. We've been paying this for a number of years now. It's $600,000. This year, Cigna is paying it for us, and next year, Horizon is going to pay it for us. But prior to that, we were paying it, it was due on April 1st, $600,000, and we were paying it directly to the state.
Again, this is something I want the public to know the Board is doing, and in the past, we've been paying for it. Now, the insurance company picked up the tab. It's a big difference, $600,000. And we, we're not advertising, people don't know, but this committee, the FF Committee is working hard to save as much as we can, okay? So we try to do our best, we'll continue to look for those savings. So Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. I would just like to say, I was elected last November and I took over in January, and there was many things that I was looking forward to doing, and tonight was definitely one of them, meeting all the teachers that are doing such a phenomenal job in our district and knowing so many other teachers that weren't here tonight that are also phenomenal. And I'm ecstatic at our two, I'm sorry, three women that have gotten promoted within the district because I actually know, two out of three, I will get to know you. And it just makes the reason for me running why I did. I enjoy working with the students. Read Across America was fabulous last month. But the only thing that I would look forward to next year, and I'm trying to reach out to anybody that will listen to Beth and I and the three young ladies from J.P. Stevens, we have only two or three recognition nights for our students. And the biggest emphasis that I always get out of that evening is that the professionals are able to say all their names with no error, and I've always been ecstatic about it. But I would like to know more about these students. Just like, I know we couldn't do what we do tonight for the teachers or we would be here for days, but I wish we could do something to truly acknowledge all the hard work our students do in this district. Now whether we can get somebody that's standing against the wall right now or some people that are sitting in the audience still, but we truly need to show what these students are doing other than just saying their name. That would make me even more happier at the fact that I ran for this office for the students, the teachers, the parents, and the residents of Edison. And we need to really share the good things about Edison. So that was my ploy. Thank you.
Yeah, so I did get an email from the students. So if you guys can continue to work with them, the kids will have probably a lot of great ideas. If there, you know, you think it's feasible, bring to the Board, we'll be more than happy to hear them. If we can implement, that'll be, that'll be fantastic. Thank you. All right, any other Board Members? See none? We open for public comments, so anybody, any, okay, Carol.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. You just gave me something else to talk about. I love that student recognition idea, and we've bounced this around. My favorite Board Meetings of the Year in the, for the 25 years I've been coming is always student recognition.
That's one, oh, good.
That's what I live for. And not trying to dump any more work on someone that might be leaning against the wall. Videos that would highlight something about what some of these activities these students are involved in and the quality of performances they put on. And I even have a venue for showing them. When the Board goes into closed session at a meeting and people might be there waiting for the end of closed session, they could be played again and again at those. Where we had our hidden heroes, you know, we might have some not-so-hidden assets in our district. And second only to student recognition night is the Teacher of the Year Awards. And I also want to congratulate the Teachers of the Edison Township Public Schools who were recognized tonight as Teachers of the Year. The amazing students of the Edison schools deserve to have the very best, most dedicated and caring teachers in the world. And every year, it seems, they definitely do have them. Year after year, I'm impressed and amazed by the outstanding teachers who are singled out for this high honor. But it is no wonder because getting hired to become a member of the teaching staff in the Edison Public Schools is a great accomplishment in itself. Our bar is raised. We choose only the best of the best. And then it is great to see that the best teachers or school are being supported by administrators, strong curriculum, staff development, technology, coaches and supervisors to give them what they need to teach the best children in the world from all around the world. It seems like it should be a piece of cake. But when you see these teachers up here, you think they must have a really easy job when they talk about all the extra things they do and how they do it so easily, juggling their 16 children and at home and everything. But it isn't. It is hard work in a changing world filled with challenges, tests, data, goals, evaluation standards, and in overcrowded classrooms in a world where school safety has become a real issue on a daily basis. But every year, the committee finds and recognizes these amazing teachers to honor. So I'd like to congratulate all the honorees and their families who share them with us all and let us have them for part of their day. And I'd like to thank them all for choosing Edison as their home away from home. And I do like the idea that we're encouraging choosing the product of our district to work here because that shows we have faith in what we're doing. If we don't hire the product of our district because they're not good enough, then are our schools good enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? President Johnson.
Joseph Johnson, 407 Durham Avenue. Well, I first of all would like to congratulate all the teachers for their Teachers of the Year Awards. That is just awesome in itself, and I too am a product of Edison, and I believe our teachers are absolutely fantastic. With that being said, on April 29th, 2019, from 2:45 to 4:00 p.m. in Room 101 at J.P. Stevens High School in Edison, New Jersey, the Lena Harris Foundation hosted its first ever Lena Harris Foundation Counseling Session with the students of the Lena Harris Foundation Mentorship Program. The session was absolutely wonderful. We discussed some challenges and difficulties that the students are currently facing while also providing them guidance and support for each situation. The students were overjoyed and relieved that there were available resources for them as they carry out their daily responsibilities. As the session concluded, the students really wanted one last session before the end of the school year. So we were able to get one more session in on June 10th, 2019, from 2:45 to 4:00 p.m. in Room 101 at J.P. Stevens High School. I would just like to take the time out to thank everyone involved so far, from Guidance Counselor Ms. Shahida Hall to J.P. Stevens Staff and Administration and the Edison Board of Education. Thank you all so much. Next, I would just like to bring light to the fact that on May 30th, 2019, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., the Lena Harris Foundation is hosting its first ever Civics Youth Group. The Civics Youth Group is designed to bridge the gap between our community leaders as well to our community leaders to our community members. All are welcome. We will be meeting our elected Board officials, our Town Councilmen, our police officers, our firefighters, and other elected officers in Edison. We are able to ask the difficult questions, gain vital information into their elected positions, and utilize them as a resource for future situations. Food and drinks will be provided, and together, we can make a difference. And that's once again on May 30th, 2019, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Mini Bville Community Center. We have our wonderful Ms. Beth Maroni and our wonderful Mrs. Conway, as well as Bob Deal, our Edison Councilman, coming to speak to the group. Thank you all so much. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to ask, Joey, what will you think of next?
Actually, the other thing I want to say is, are you going to start in Edison High next year?
Uh, yes.
Edison High?
Yes.
Next year? Definitely, yes, right? Okay. You're on record.
I bring the petition for the raise of bus subscription from 500...
Name and address, please.
Sorry. My name is Nidhi. I live in 94 Prestwick Way, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. I bring the petition for the bus subscription raise, which is almost 30% from 650 to 500. And this petition is addressed to all Board Members, and I want to stand on behalf of other parents. We are reaching out to, sorry, I'm getting nervous. We are reaching out in plea to have Edison Board of Education reconsider the bus subscription fee for the year 2019-2020. In the recent view of tax brackets going up and dramatically this year, the average household is paying increased tax, and it is difficult for us parents to bear this additional cost which is levied. Typically, most residents here are middle-class families. It will create great financial difficulty and hardship, especially for the ones who are having multiple kids in a family. For example, if a family has three kids going to school and living under two miles from school, they will end up paying 1950 for the school year. school, they will end up paying 1950 for the school year, which is abnormally high for average middle-class household, especially when one parent is a earning member, which is very common. We humbly request you to reconsider this abnormal increase and provide some relief for working-class families in Edison. In the past, I mean, I have been an Edison resident since 2005. The bus subscription was 450 back then, people living under two, under two miles, and especially the areas which were hazardous, and the people could not commute by walk. The bus subscription was free. Back in 2010, 2011, when the school year began, because of the challenges in the budget, we were imposed with a fee of 475. So 450 to 475 was pretty nominal. We bore it. Thereafter, back in 2015 and 16, the fee went up to 500. We understand things are getting expensive, and it is not possible for the Board of Education to support it. But the challenge is the $150 increase at one go. We do not resist an increase, but it should be nominal and not abnormal like this. So this is a request. We want you to please look into it. And in the last meeting when I attended on Wednesday, we were told that Edison is the so-called rich neighborhood. We were supporting 89% of the expenses. But we should also see that in the past, it's not the same people who are staying. People are selling homes to other people and going. So I think the demographics is changing, and I believe it is time for us to look into and require, go back to the state and reassess whether we are rich enough to support it. Is the 89% standard still valid? Is there a way we can redesign or relook into the whole mathematics and come up with a better number? We, if board doesn't support it, is there a way state can aid it?
Okay, yeah, you want to...
Yeah. As far as what you're talking about with the 89%, we don't have any authority or power to assess what the value of Edison is based on their ratables. That is done by the county, the state, so those numbers are given to us. It's unfortunate that we only get what we get, and we're still underfunded by how much, how many million?
16 million.
16 million. So the state still owes us 16 million a year. So we've been underfunded for the past many, 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 many years, and that's a law that's in effect through the state, yet they don't follow their own law. So we have no control over being considered a so-called rich district based on ratables. The Board of Ed has no control.
Yeah, so if you actually look at the state aid we have received in the past two years, Edison has received more state aid than before. It's because the hard work of some of the board members sitting here, going to Trenton, lobbying those folks, and working, you know, pushing the assembly folks in our area to get us more state aid. So if you look at the state aid, we actually increased. And Edison had a bigger percentage increase than the other school districts. As far as the 475 to 500, you sent me that email, and I asked then the question. So Dan, can you explain that, that change?
Just for historical purposes, I just want to go back to when we first started the subscription busing program. We used to have what we used to call hazardous busing, but it got to the point where everything was hazardous, no sidewalks, heavy traffic, and all this kind of stuff. So the board at that point in time, under Dr. Capraro, who was superintendent at the time, decided they were going to, as a courtesy to the parents who were not entitled to remote busing, the two miles to the high school, or middle school and elementaries, or two and a half to the high school, that they would start a subscription busing program, but they would phase it in over five years. So they were going to start 20%, of the total cost, 40%, 60%, and five years later, it was supposed to be 100%. So what happened was, we came up with a number in 2000, 2001, was the first year, we were charging the parents $155 for their busing. The following year, we charged them 235. In 2002, '03, we charged 345. Then we went up to 430 and 34. Then it was supposed to go to 500, because it would only be a 70% $70 increase. However, the board didn't want to go to 500. They only went up 20 bucks to 450. It stayed at 450 for the next four years, until 2008, '09, it went to 475. 2009, '10, it went to 500. But then, at that time, we had a board president named Dave Dickinson, who felt if we knocked it down to 475, we might have a better shot and get our budget approved. We were still voting on our budget then. Even though it didn't help, we still, it still went down. But it went down to 475 for the next four years. Then in 14, '15, it went to 500. And the, one of the things when this was first put in place was that the board didn't feel it was fair for the taxpayers to pay for something that wasn't mandated by state law. So they wanted to do as a courtesy to the parents, but if they wanted, if they wanted, it had to be a self-sustaining program, which it had, it was at the beginning, but it hasn't been for the last five, six years, mainly because Dr. O'Malley didn't want us to increase our costs, or the cost to the parents. However, we have just increased our budget this year by $3.3 million, because our transportation costs have gone up 30%. So $500 isn't covering the cost anymore. 650 would just barely break us even, and that's the reason why the board went to 650.
Right.
So the other thing is that I wanted, yeah, your time's up. So the, I just want to add is that, yes, the last meeting you probably left with the, some of the parents. People say, you know, school district has a big budget. We just passed a budget, $260 million, right? 82% of the $260 million is contractual obligations. I hope, maybe with the change of insurance, it came down a little bit, you know? So let's use 80% as calculation's easy, right? $260 million, 80, you know, 20%, it is used for day-to-day operation. That's $52 million, okay? And then just charge 13 million for the bus, right? That's 26% or 25% of the total budget. Then you have to add the utility, okay? That's about $3.5 million, $3.2 million. Then you will have the food. That's some 3-something million dollars again, okay? You add that up, and you have our computers, you have textbooks, you have the athletic programs, you have all of that. This is how much we operate now, is about those $50 million. And, yeah, we do realize that the $150 increase is a big increase, but as you can see, again, I'm going to continue to say thanks to our zoning board. Our school is overcrowded. And if you parents will go and pick up and drop off, you're going to wait there for a long time. So the district wants to increase the subscription bus to reduce the congestion at the schools. I think to get us break even, 32 kids or 35 kids?
Yeah, 30, 35 kids.
Yes. 35 kids. If we can get one bus, we can reduce 35 cars, okay? So we try to provide more of those services to the parents. But with $500, the more service we provide, the more money we lose, just because too many kids are here. So we have no choice but to increase this. So you did bring up a good point. So Dan, do we have like sibling discounts or something if you have like a couple kids? Do you have, you know, sibling discounts?
Well, free lunch students get free busing.
Yeah, but for...
But we do allow for payment plan over the year if they can't make it all at one time.
But there's no sibling discounts.
Student?
Sibling discounts, like two, three brothers, you know, sisters.
Well, we don't have, that's not in our policy at this point. We can always change the policy, but there's nothing, and they're reducing it. If you have three students, you pay 650 three times.
Okay, so that's our policy, unless we change the policy. Right now, we don't have that. But two, what, two years ago, we implemented a payment plan. So parents who have issues paying one shot, they can work with our department, and we can have payment plans on that. So that's the best we can do. The reason it is increased was to, we try to provide more services, but we're losing more money with the just pure number of students coming to the district.
I do want to point out one more thing. For the last four years, Dapper Bus, who's a private contractor, for any area we didn't have subscription busing, for private busing, they've been charging 875 to parents in the areas that we don't have subscription busing for the last four years. So 500 and even 650 is quite a bit less than what Dapper's, that Dapper's over 900 this year. And they have to do it because of the same reason we have to, their costs have been going up.
I missed mentioning that I have collected around handwritten thousand signatures. I didn't count them, but I'm estimating by the number of lines and the sheets I have. And I would like to, by time, and by June 1st, I am thinking of getting support of 3,000 people. That's my estimate. I don't know if the board can still reconsider it, but this will be our effort, just to show that we do not agree with the increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes? Anthony? Oh, wait.
Hi, my name is Venu Pabha, five David Court. I attended a last meeting also on the same issue, and it's the same topic, again. Just to add the fee increase from 500 to the 650, I think that is not reasonable. Again, I'm telling you again, you told all the reasons, what you can, but I can tell you that many reasons why it is not affordable to the parents who are paying the money. Two kids I have, I'm paying 1,300. That's on top of all the taxes. So the other option is like run out of the township, right? You keep on increasing the taxes, and then, you know, it is a difficult. And second thing I'm going to tell you, one important thing, which I highlighted already in the last week, which is, if you increase the money for the subscription, more parents will choose to pick and drop. And the current situation in the, all the schools, what you already have is the worst situation in terms of the overcrowding and picking and dropping situation. Already the parking and, parking situation is already bad over there. Not parking, actually, you know, when the parents come to pick and drop. And now more parents, more parents will choose to pick and drop situation rather than the subscription service. And then, the current situation, from the current bad situation to the, it will become a worse situation. And that time, you will start spending money on analyzing what is happening in the traffic, how can I go to analysis, and having meetings with the parents, principals, teachers, spending a lot of money. Instead of that, think broader, and see how you can solve more problems. Parents are unhappy. You know, you're charging unnecessary extra money to, you know, 600, 500 to the 650. I don't know whose salary increased in one year that much, 30%. To justify that, you can just go and increase 30% by your own way. And second thing is, it will also increase the traffic in the schools. And actually, sorry, I'm not done. So I wanted to also one, raise another different topic, actually. Last meeting when I attended, I heard some people talking about the board suing the zoning authority or whatever other board.
Zoning board, yes.
Zoning board. So this is, I don't have a lot of information on that, but when I first heard that, I thought, okay, seems like that's a good idea, that they have a, they're taking initiative to solve the overcrowding issue. But when I heard the people comment and your comments last week, I didn't think you are actually in the right mind to solve the problem. The reason I'm, again, I don't have all the information I said. The reason I'm telling you is, you don't have a solution, how you going to solve that problem, right? What you're trying to tell is stopping the zoning board to approve the new houses. What does that means? That means you don't want any new people to come to the town? So I did not understand what is going on, but that's my just comment. We need new people to come into the town, but separately, we need to solve the issue with the overcrowding. And not just having the meetings with the parents, reaching, I heard like multiple people last week said that, you know, I'm having meetings with the people, kids, this one. That's it, there's no solution over there. I'm offering a solution. Reduce the fee, stop analyzing anything, you will reduce the traffic issue. Okay? Again, this is, this is again related to the, this is personally affected to me, this is the first, that's the way I came, first time last, the last meeting, again, I'm going second meeting. If still you're not going to consider that, I'm going to go door to door, every house, and raise this concern, and then get the signatures. And if you still don't want to do that, that's your choice.
Jerry, can I ask a question?
Thank you. Yeah, you want to say something?
Yeah. No, wait, if you can just come back, I have one question, sir. I mean, with the whole lawsuit thing and all of that, I can explain that there is a solution, most definitely a solution. Maybe you haven't read about it, but it is there. There are alternatives to slow down growth through residential development. Residential development costs the town more than it brings the town, and I think we explained that. But my question was, you said you had a solution to the busing. Could you just tell me what that solution is?
Oh, reduce the fee and free busing.
Reduce the fee, so more people, 35 people can go in the one bus, so 35 cars will be less. So, yeah, so then, the less traffic will go into the...
So in other words, okay, so let me get this straight. So the town overdeveloped, right? And no parents went to zoning boards or planning boards to complain about it, because it was okay. But now you, now the school board should, because that'll cost us over $4 million to give free busing for all the residents in Edison, which means, where does the $4 million come from? Do we just charge you as taxpayers more? Because then you won't pay the extra 150, it'll be spread out amongst everybody else in the district. And is that really fair, since it's not, that's not what we're required to do by law?
So when are you going to solve the problem with the bus overcrowding issue, in the morning pick and drop issue? I hear every time, you know, I saw a lot of your videos, I didn't attend here, but I watched so many videos, right? And then last week also, I think it's a role for, somebody raised that issue, right? All I hear in all those videos here is, I attended this place, this race came, overcrowding issue. But I didn't hear any solution in any of the video I watched. Again, I don't have all the information, but I watched plenty of videos to just understand what is going on, right? I didn't, okay? And then, you're just talking, right? But take one step further to see, reduce this one, see if it's going to solve the problem of crowding issue. Are the more cars coming in the morning and evening, that issue?
Well, that's a separate issue. That's a traffic issue.
Yeah, I'm talking about traffic issue only.
Right, that's a traffic. Right, the overcrowding thing, that's that plan that Gene put together, and that's the whole lawsuit thing. What you're really talking about is traffic, not overcrowding.
Traffic in the morning and evening. That's only the one I'm, I'm talking about, yes.
Mr. Sharma, I just...
No, I'm Venu.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So you can sit down, well, yeah.
I just want to say, it sounds to me like you might make a good candidate for the Board of Education down the line. I have to tell you, we are people who are members of the community. This is not a paid position to be on the Board of Ed. We spend thousands of hours a year trying to solve the problems of the township. We're just citizens like you, and we can't solve everything. We try the best we can to do the best we can by the students and the teachers and the families of Edison. So I invite you, the deadline for running for this year is, I think, July 31st. Come and join us.
Okay, thanks for saying that, but I'm not here to, okay, run the, run for the board or anything. What I'm trying to tell is that...
Yeah, you have answered a question, so, you know, we're not here in the debate, okay? Okay, but I told you last time, you can sit down. And $50 million is the operating budget, okay? If you want us to provide free buses, you are looking at the perspective of parents, but you're not looking at the perspective of residents who has no children in the district, okay? If we're providing free buses to everyone, unless the parents are picking it up, unless you're suggesting all the parents are picking up, otherwise, that burden is shipped to all the residents who have no children in the district. Do you think that's fair, okay? And solving overcrowding, you're talking about dropping off and, you know, pickup. But we're talking about much more, bigger picture, okay? Zoning board, if a house is built in the Edison Township area, the school board by law needs to educate the children. Unless you can come up some great ideas to reduce the kids coming into our district, I'll be more than happy to hear that, okay? You can stand there and continue to say, you do, do it, do it, do it. If you have any solutions, I'll talk to you after the meeting, okay? I'll talk to you after the meeting, stay, and I'll be, I'll be more than happy to discuss with your solutions. Yes, Anthony?
Anthony DiAmro, 15 Rodak Circle. I'll say, listen, it's unsustainable, number one, the way the town is building. To expect the school board to keep up with the growth rate is just, it's just crazy. There is no law that says that you got to continue... There is no law that says that you gotta continue building. We can stop for X amount of time to let the school catch up. So that, that's why I backed this board on zoning, on the lawsuit. I also want to say, congratulations to the teachers, all the teachers that got recognized tonight. As somebody, this is my 20th year anniversary, graduating from Edison High School, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you, I'm a product of the Edison School District and I turned out perfectly fine. So, so there, I commend all the teachers. Question for, first of all, I love the GPS idea in the buses. That's, I love it. I hope it, I hope it's successful, the rollout, the pilot, pilot part of it. The $223, Dan, is that $223 extra a month?
A year.
Or a year, per year?
Annual.
Okay, okay, all right. But overall, I think, you know, 191 million, whatever it is it's gonna cost, you add in all the other expenses this town is, you know, the new water and sewer deal, take that into consideration. It's asking a lot, you know, for the taxpayer to pick up. And that's why I agree with Mr. Brecher's idea of actually breaking it down, you know, where's this, how's this $10 million being spent? I think that's only logical to ask that. I don't think that's too much. It gives a taxpayer a better idea of how their money's, you know, where their money's exactly going, you know? People are afraid of fraud getting involved when it comes to that amount of money, so I think that's a noble idea. I also want to address why I was originally gonna come up here and say, you know, last week was a successful week. It was the first time I went Facebook Live from a Board of Ed meeting. We're live right now, hello mom? We had several thousand views last week and that's all due respect to the gentlemen that do the YouTube page.
They'll take your job away.
No, no, I'm not. And here's what I, here's what I want to go. You know, I've been doing it for the SUEZ meetings, that's where I started, and it really just snowballed from there. People, there's an interest, people that can't come to these meetings to watch it in real time. And I'll just give you one example, last week when you guys had the Horizon people here, the woman that was, I guess one of the women from Horizon, she was sitting down next to me. And in real time, people, you had teachers that were watching the feed and asking questions and they had, one of, somebody had a question and the woman happened to be sitting right next to me and she was able to answer it right then and there. It was, you're able to interact. And these gentlemen could do that themselves, you know, you could incorporate it, Matouchin does it, I know Matouchin does it, listen, if Matouchin could do it...
We'd do a better job than Matouchin.
We could do it, we could do it, exactly. So I'm not trying to take your jobs, they do a great job. But I think, look, when I got thrown, I got thrown out of the zoning board. Speaking of zoning board, I tried to video from there.
Go there, watch them from...
We're gonna go there in droves, 100 of us are gonna video from there, believe me. But I think it's something I hope this board takes into consideration going forward. There's not, there's no reason why we can't get this rolled out by fall semester, I believe. It's full transparency, we always talk about having more people come to these meetings. This is a way, it's, you know, people can cook dinner at the same time, I don't have to go over, we all know what live streaming is. So I hope this board takes it into consideration. And, you know, I might be busy going forward, so I might not be able to be doing this the whole time, so it's for these guys. Thank you very much.
Next, what we could do, instead of having you guys holding it, we'll put a chair or something, gonna at least put it there so you don't have to hold it all the time.
We'll take some water, some lemonade, too.
But, you know, I do ask you to watch it out, the zoning board for the Board, especially that development at the corner of Woodland and Inman.
Right.
See what's going on, what's gonna happen there.
All right, we'll ask them. Thank you.
Jerry? Yes?
It's on the summer to-do list. Anthony, do you hear that? It's on the summer to-do list to do a live feed. So you don't have to sit there and hold your head for two hours.
Yes, Matt.
Matt Rev...
Hold it, hold it.
Sorry, no, that's all right. Matt Revnacki, TA Vice President, teacher here at JP Stevens, Two at the Road. First of all, I have a question concerning the June 4th, which is a day for school. It came up, what's gonna happen for, for example, scheduled field trips that day?
Do we have any?
Yes. I understand John Adams, it is, has like their whole eighth grade going on a field We can't hear it.
We haven't been confronted with that, so it's...
Well, discuss it.
Okay, I'm just saying, because that's another thing, it wasn't discussed, so to just...
We didn't know that, so...
To bring to your attention.
But every time, so when you move something, you touch something else, that's something, you know, that's unfortunate, right?
Understandable, but these are some things too with the change. And I know you said before, but I do hope that whether it be staff or students that tried to do the right thing on June 5th and schedule things now with delayed change, you know, that, again, they're not penalized in any way.
We will try to do that, you know, individual cases, just work it out with whatever the department. Apologize, this is the last minute change, but, you know.
Good, thank you. All right, the second thing is, first of all, the teacher recognition again, congratulations to all the recipients. Again, great representatives, many of them I do know, and I know they're wonderful teachers and staff, you know, and I think they're representative of the great staff we have across the district. The third thing, what I really want to say, and I was gonna come up with the resolutions, but I figured I'd wait till the end, and the three people that got promoted in, you know, these positions. Gail Polikowski, I've worked with since she's been the principal here, she is an outstanding leader. The people at JP Stevens are saddened to lose her, but as I've told people is that now she's going to be actually in charge of many buildings and have a positive effect. You know, driving here, I was thinking about if Gail is half the leader and dedication that she is as a principal here over the years, you made the right choice. And knowing Gail, you're not gonna get half, you're gonna get probably double, you know, what she puts in. She lives in this place, she's always a person that shows respect to her people. We haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always shown each other respect, we have that discussion, and that's all you can ask of someone. So I applaud you. One thing attached to that, and I know Mr. Shi, you know, actually mentioned it before, a number of times I've stayed up, stood up here over the years and have criticized the fact, why are we hiring all these people out of district? When I constantly hear how great our staff is, why aren't we promoting within? I know we had in the past, Mr. Candelosi was one of them, who was one of Gail's mentors, who had a vision for developing leaders. And that seemed to go away. And seeing some of the appointments recently, going back a few months ago, we had people appointed to the elementary school vice principals that were within, I'm hoping in, as Ms. Maroni, I believe, said before, that we continue that pattern. The second one is Ms. Blevins, principal, new principal at Woodrow Wilson, she's replacing an outstanding principal. Mrs. Cattoya is an excellent leader and principal also. I know of who the three finalists were, all great candidates, and for Mrs. Blevins to be chosen, I think, again, it shows the qualification she has. The other thing with her is it brings and keeps stability to Woodrow Wilson. I think that's important. I said that I've been here 31 years, I've worked under three principals in 31 years, and I actually met the first principal that opened this building, who retired shortly before I got here, four principals in 50-some years show stability. And while we have great staff, great students, but that stability from leadership, I think, goes a long way also to the success of our schools. And the third person is Mrs. Pittinger. Mrs. Pittinger is an excellent teacher, she's very highly respected by the staff here at JP Stevens. When it comes to technology, she's very good at it. So I was very happy to see her get that position as well. And I think the committee and the Board voted on three excellent choices moving forward. The one challenge I have for you now is replacing them with the qualified applicants that you just promoted to these other positions. I know that's what I'm concerned about people here at JP. And I said, the main thing now is to get the proper fit to replace Gail Polikowski moving forward so that we keep the excellence in the school we're in. Obviously, we place Ms. Blevins, that she has the support she needs to be successful in her new role. The final thing I just want to mention is, and it goes back to the bond and the building. And I know Mr. Shi and I actually talked in the back room in the intermission the other day. You know, these are things that should have been done years ago, and I do agree with you, people from the public need to come and see what it's like, the overcrowding. You know, we're back to using trailers, definitely not an ideal learning situation. You feel almost separated and isolated from the actual student population when you're there. We have teachers back on carts and the specials on, you know, rolling around from room to room. It's just not healthy. It's very important that, you know, these things get done. And the more you put it off, you're just kicking the cow down the road, the price doesn't come down. The further you push it down the road, the pricing costs of doing these things are just gonna keep going up. So I do hope that, you know, the people out there make a wise decision because it is definitely a necessity that we, you know, perform some of these projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? No? Be quiet today. All right, see none? Can I have a motion for, okay? All right. Mr. Brecher, Mrs. Ward, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.